We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Ms. Downs-Lewis, if you can, would you be so kind to take the role?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqy?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis is excused.
She's sick, yeah.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant? Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
And President Ross.
Present.
We have a quorum.
And can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please?
Support.
All in favor? Any opposed, same sign? There being none. We do have an agenda. We have two action items. We're going to start with the administrative appointment. If I can... Oh, thank you very much. Yes, public comment. Thank you very, very much. Do we have any public comment cards for this evening for agenda or non-agenda items? Don't believe we do. We will go ahead and...
No, we do have one.
We do have one, thank you.
And then are we changing this order that was...
We're starting, yeah, we're going to do this public comment first. And if Ms. Lusk is not here, we will start with the administrative appointment. Because we need Ms. Lusk to speak to the RFU process. So, we do have the one public comment card, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, sir.
How's it going?
Good to see you.
Yeah. All right.
And you are familiar that board comments are limited to three minutes. We do have a timer and I'll keep track of that, but I won't cut you abruptly or anything.
Okay.
Just give you a heads up if so. Thank you, though.
Okay, all right. So, I'm Jose Rodriguez, soon to be appointed to the board. But I just wanted to come here today to speak about the process of appointing a community member to the GRPS school board. While I personally know I feel the individual is selected for an interview, I absolutely mean no disrespect to the candidate's chosen. I also believe the candidates that ran a campaign for school board and applied should have been considered for the position as well. I believe in the will of the people. I believe in democracy. School board seats are elected positions for a reason. If they were not existing, power structures would continue to uphold themselves by appointing those that would act on their behalf, maintaining the status quo. If I were to apply to a vacancy as a 29-year-old with no job and no fancy title or resume to speak of, a position I was in throughout the entirety of my campaign, I probably would not have been chosen to interview. But our community was given a choice and they elected me to the school board as the highest vote getter. I would not go as far as to say that this is a subversion of democracy, but I do wish you had allowed those that put in the time and effort a chance to make their case one last time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, absolutely. Any other public comment? There being none. We will go ahead and get started with the action item for administrative appointment. May we have a motion to approve the appointment? I believe it was in your packet, Dean of Students at Ottawa Hills. Yes.
So moved? To accept the list?
I think they're just trying to find it. Ms. Downs-Lewis hasn't made the motion for the administrative appointment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Take roll.
Please. Yes, excuse me.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's excused, Ms. Davis is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Ross.
Yes. Thank you. And we have one final action item, well, a second action item. The request for use, the RFU process for the Kensington Building property. We have an updated RFU that was just passed to you. Ms. Lusk, I don't know if you want to provide some highlights on that?
Yes, thank you.
And again, this is a revision of where we started, obviously, previously, so.
Yes, so at the last meeting, as you'll recall, there were some recommended changes that were made to the RFU, and so I've updated to include those. So I'm just going to go over the highlights. Ms. Lusk, before you begin, I just want to make sure one has the changes in red and the second one is the actual document? Yes. Yeah, so the first one are the changes I made from when we discussed this last week and then the clean version for the board actually approved. Thank you, clean, okay, thank you. All right, so the first big change that was made, and this was in response to Mrs. Williams' recommendation that a committee be formed to initially open a review of the bids once we receive them and to provide a report to the board of the ones that the committee recommends rejecting and the ones the committee recommends accepting and the reason behind both decisions so that the board has all the bids in front of them and can understand why the recommendations were what they were. The second significant change was to include the fact that the board may, at its discretion, accept multiple bids. And the reason for that is because there may be one bidder that wants to purchase the building and another bidder that may want to lease the land. And since GRPS is retaining ownership of the land, making sure that the bidders were aware that there could be multiple bids accepted and that they may cover lease of the land as well as purchase of the building so that when they submit a bid, submit their bid, they understand exactly what it is that the board may end up doing. And those were the significant changes.
All right. Any questions or comments or anything to explore before we entertain a motion? Okay. So, yeah, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve the RFU for Kensington?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lusk.
Thank you.
All right. Time for the fun stuff, huh? So, yes, as you know, we do have three candidates to interview to fill the seat vacated by Ms. Grant with her election to the State House. First candidate is before us, Mr. Jordan Eaton, but just before he takes his seat, we will do a round robin piece for the question. So we'll just, if you don't mind, Reverend Mathias, once we get started, we'll start with you for question one. We'll work our way with question two from Ms. Lewis, question three from me, and so on. Also in your packet, you have their application materials, their resume, their cover letter for your review. After each candidate, we'll collectively talk about individuals' strengths. We'll make our own notes on what you perceive as their strengths, what you hear as far as others from their strengths. Not that any candidate is perfect, but we'll only get into the concerning pieces if we get to a deliberative process where we need to really narrow down that selection piece. Also, Ms. Anderson did put this in your packets, only use it if you want. She just offered that as a helpful ranking piece if you feel the need to do so. But however, if you want to keep the thing straight in your own head, by all means, that's up to you, but just be prepared to offer commentary as we go through the process. And, I don't know, Ms. Anderson or Mr. Hendricks, if you could be so kind, if our other candidates happen to come during the interview process, will you ask them to wait in the lobby? I did communicate with that, with them prior to the start of our meeting, but just in case, we just want to respect each candidate's opportunity to speak freely without others, I guess, competing folks, you know? I don't want to say eavesdropping, but you get my point. Thank you. Any questions or comments or anything before we kind of get started? Good to go? All right, well, Mr. Eaton, the chair is yours, sir. If you feel free to have a seat there. We have budgeted about 30 minutes for each interview. We have 10 scripted questions. As you heard, we'll just kind of rotate around with those questions. If you need one repeated or don't understand, of course, just ask and we'll accommodate that. And we'll keep track of the time here. Please don't be concerned about that. And if we do get to a point where we think time is a concern, I will most certainly give you a heads up. Otherwise, unless you have any clarifying questions, I'll turn it over to Reverend Mathias to ask the first one. Good? All right, thank you. And thank you for your interest, too, by the way. This, you made, I was going to get into a whole other spiel about all three candidates being great, and this is a very anxious moment for me because I think all three of you are bringing great value to this board, but obviously, we can only choose one. But anyway, I digress. Thank you for indulging me. Reverend Mathias?
Welcome.
Thank you.
What would you like us to know about you and your reasons, goals, and experiences related to seeking appointment on the GRPS board?
Well, first off, before I get into that, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be selected as far as one of the finalists for this vacant seat. I don't take that lightly. I know that decision was not an easy decision for you all to make, but I am appreciative of this moment, so thank you for that before I get started. Yes, as introduced, my name is Jordan Eaton. I am a lifetime resident of Grand Rapids. I want to talk about my first introduction to the GRPS administration in our local government was when I was a freshman at Ottawa Hills High School, actually. From there, I had the opportunity to join the Mayor's Youth Council, which is a still ongoing program that you guys have today. I was able to see firsthand the passion that the school district had for its scholars. My experience, as outlined in my resume before you, comes with a strong public administration background. Those work professional in my lived experience is a driver force for me to enter for this vacancy, which stand on my three core values, which is excellence, equity, and empowerment. Through excellence, I will use my leadership and professional experience to ensure that GRPS operates with the highest standards of excellence. I will push for reevaluation of existing programming that will result in high achievement and excellent educational experiences for all students and teachers in the district. With equity, I will ensure that all students, regardless of zip code, have equitable access and especially those who are often left out of that conversation with accessibility needs. Empowerment, I will continue to engage community partners, including parents, educators, and scholars, business community members, leaders, and that will provide input that will help guide our district, not just for the current state, but also for the future. That intentional collaboration is extremely important to me.
Thank you.
Your first thing I do is misplace my questions. I'm glad you're here. Sorry about that. What are your thoughts on how a board of education and a district administration should work together?
Yeah, I love that question. Truthfully, I have the honor and privilege of working for the City of Grand Rapids, our local branch, and I had, as a result of working in the executive office, I was able to firsthand see that what a healthy relationship looks like from our commissioners and our staff. That was extremely important to see that differences of opinions, difference of values can still come together for the common good. So I definitely think it is a healthy relationship that needs to be induced. There also has to be a level of trust, right? So as a potential board member, understanding that we are responsible for setting up those directives, but also putting trust in administration to execute that and to provide feedback slash pushback, I think that is also important to have diversity of thought at the table. That diversity of thought helps shape innovation often breeds from that. And so I think having that pure example of how you can work across multiple disciplines to achieve whatever the common goals are was firsthand experience, and so thank you for that question.
Thank you. Can you please provide some examples of how you've worked with our community and/or GRPS schools and the results of that work?
Oh, sure. Thank you. So I have had the honor of leading the City of Grand Rapids' largest diversity event, which was called the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit, and I led that for six years out of its eight years. As a result of that, if you are not familiar with what the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit is, it is a one-day workshop that brings from across from, literally, one-day-old infancy, if you wanted to do that, to elders in the community. So we wanted to make sure that we created something that was for the entire family, removing any barriers, including having childcare, a kids' summit, a teen track, and also for adult learners as well. So that was one of the largest things that I was able to, I would say, lead. As a result of that, each year, increasing attendance from that programming. One of the things that helped with that, from my personal opinion and take of that, is the intentionality behind engagement and the process of surveying. Getting that feedback from residents, uplifting resident voice in that regards and seeing what can be done and what would you like to improve on for the following year. Each year had a very particular theme, and so we really embraced the idea that the theme around with the community resources to accompany and support that theme. And so I would say one of the, what I call one of my biggest successes with that was in 2020, which we know was a shakable year for us all across many aspects of that. But I was able to expand that with intentionality, with understanding the local restrictions and the state restrictions and federal restrictions that we had at the time, was to make something outdoor, right? We kind of missed that sense of community and that sense of interaction due to being locked in, due to lockdown, that it was a needed thing to kind of reestablish what does community look like. And so I was able to expand a program from one day to five days and intentionally bring that to each ward that the city represents. And that was intentional to remove any barriers from transportation or anything of that nature. We also partnered with the Rapids to, if there was any accommodations needed for transportation to that area as well. So it was really important for me to leverage that, but also as a way of we increased attendance from, that was a little bit over 500 to over 2,000. And that was really, really important and a proud moment. From that as well, I was able to start something brand new, which was called the Summit Marketplace. And that was intentional to not only highlight our BIPOC businesses throughout the community, but also even some of our students that were entrepreneurs to be, to partake in what it would mean to be a merchant, especially in the downtown space. That often doesn't always seem to be embrace of, but we also know that it is a place for all, and so it was really intentional to create that as well. Also, as a City of Grand Rapids liaison, a neighborhood association, so monthly I met with all the neighborhood associations. And a lot of our neighborhood associations hold a lot of after-school programming for our students, which you guys call scholars. And so part of that is understanding their needs and being able to address that from a municipal context and seeing what can be added to that. As co-chair of the Grand Rapids African-American Arts and Music Festival, it was important also for that, that we always incorporated a student aspect to that. And so whether that was embracing of the arts or any other program, it is important that we made sure that our students had a platform to showcase their talents when it came, when it came to art and music. There's also the Hospitality Academy that is at Ottawa Hills High School that I oversee as well. And so that was really something that is to talk about the different, different access to different forms of education and tracks that don't necessarily always require further college education, but what is there now? What can you do now? Because not everyone is going to go to college or see college as they're fit. As we know, the pandemic has proven that this, this current generation are not so inclined, are inclined to go to college. They have learned to use their assets and their skills to do so, and this is another aspect of that with that academy as well. In addition to that, I was able to establish two food pantries to combat food deserts in a 49506 and 49507 zip code. Also worked with the Johnson Center with the Grand Valley State University for Neighborhood Leadership Academy that was able to equip residents with skill sets to be able to impact their, to impact their neighborhood as a whole. And then also with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. For the first time, that national organization hosted their annual conference in Michigan, and we fought to bring that to Grand Rapids. That was intentional to bring that to Grand Rapids because, like myself, you don't really, you don't know what's there until you can see yourself in a sense to me. And so being able to provide a platform for students to be able to see themselves in the public sector, much like the seats that you sit in, we wanted that to be attainable and accessible, so we were able to partner and provide some scholarships also with that as well. And then with that, I've also participated with contributing and administering scholarships locally, prioritizing GRPS students as a result through some affiliation of other, what I would call fraternities and sororities of the Divine Nine.
Thank you.
What do you know about current district initiatives or priorities? Tell us about any opinions and thoughts you have regarding those efforts.
Yeah, so combing over, and I would say multiple times, of the strategic plan that you guys placed from 2022 to 2027, you kind of outlined six themes that pointed out to be your priorities. Meeting holistic student needs, optimize and value of all school options, ensure equitable access and outcomes, enhance curriculum and program opportunities, cultivate an engaged, impactful, and more diverse workforce, and lastly, create a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardess, and stewardship, excuse me. My opinion about that is these are all great initiatives, and I think they are strong as far as making sure that the engagement with the students and scholars and parents and administration is very strong. In particular, what's really interesting to me about those things is recently, there was a Michigan Education Department release of information regarding three of our schools that are not performing or meeting the academic needs. Those were Ottawa Hills High School, Alger Heights Middle Elementary, and then Campus. Two of those, out of those six themes or priorities that I would say, I believe can be applied to address some of the concerns, to combat that recent data. One of those could be the meeting holistic student needs, and then the second one is creating a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship. Engagement with staff, scholars, and parents, and my personal opinion, are needed to understand the needs of the scholars and administration in the school for potential blind spots that we might not be aware of. From those findings, if that produces anything, the district administration and school board can work together to address whatever concerns are brought up about that. I also think we could take a deeper look into the success of City High. City High has had some great findings, some great press, and most recently with their most national ranking. There's some things that can be gleaned from that success of that school and apply throughout the district. Achievement is attainable, but we must do the work to get to the root cause and not just address the symptoms. And I think applying those two in particular, I'm not saying that the other four would not be applicable, but those two in particular, I think, can be an immediate need in assessment to see what's actually going on deeper than the results of what you're seeing that was produced from the MEDE.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Discuss your thoughts on issues of charter schools, vouchers, and public education, please.
Thank you. Charter schools. Charter schools, we know are the reallocation of funds away from traditional public schools. The interesting thing about charter schools is that if that fund, if that student leaves and funding goes with them to that charter school and that student leaves that charter school, it doesn't always mean that those funds return to the district. And if, first, I am against the removing the funds from the public schools that would take away from our students, but if some are in favor of that, then I definitely would suggest that they push back or, excuse me, impose upon their legislation to create a second funding source to support that initiative that doesn't take away from public education. Vouchers also is education tax dollar that is diverted from public schools to help subsidize tuition, but often used for public and, what do they call, private, excuse me, private and religious schools. But oftentimes, those vouchers are great for families, but typically, what they were designed to do was to address or give opportunities for low-income households to have equal access to education. But often, studies have shown that that type of, that the awardings have not always gone to those families. In fact, it has been some of those of the middle and upper class that can afford that and want to go to their, so the public schools are required by law, however, to offer a wide range of free services to students, especially those with accessibility needs. And private schools don't have to follow those individual, excuse me, do not have to follow the Individual with Disabilities Education Act that literally requires that public schools provide all children with an ambitious educational program. That often is something that, when those dollars are diverted, they can, in a sense, be discriminatory against those students that might have those needs. For public education, I think public education is a great equalizer, and I think it's extremely important, to be frank. That is where we allow our students to keep the ability to learn irrespective of both and also social status. It allows them to gain the tools that are needed to, that will impact them for the rest of their lives, whether that is social skills, whether that is interactive skills. Education has sometimes, I always feel like, a luxury for those that can afford it, but those who can't afford the private school, that they shouldn't have to sacrifice the quality of their education because of some of those income standards.
Okay, welcome, bienvenido. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Grand Rapids Public Schools, and what strategies, strategies do you think the board should undertake to address that issue?
Well, I think one of the most pressing needs is something that I just mentioned, which is about those three schools that are at, under assessment and review right now. I think that is a priority that needs to be addressed. We can't afford to be a bystander with that data that under, that has kind of highlighted the aspect that there is something going on, and so I think there is some further investigation with some of the things that I kind of laid out in the previous asked question around that, to address that and dig deeper regarding that students, the faculty, that building overall, there's something going on. And so I definitely think there needs to be some intentional investigatory work to address those needs, including engagement and transparency, transparency with reporting out what those results and those findings are. Also allowing for that feedback to happen from students. I think that is the, we often go from a state of not engaging the students enough in what they think could be the problems. I think with that comes with some innovation, it's a form of responsibility for us to be able to hear and allow the students to be able to voice. That also gives them the skill set to understand how to, how to interact with opposing views, how to present yourself or make your case. So there's always an opportunity to have a lesson learned, but I definitely think those, addressing those three schools that were produced in the MEDE report is a must. Thank you.
Reverend Mathias, back to you for question number seven.
Are we going to do follow-up?
If we have time at the end, yes, I will. We introduce an opportunity for follow-up to, once we get through them, yes.
Again, thank you for applying. This is a very diverse city and school district. Do you have any expectations that may have helped to promote or foster the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Do you have any experiences?
Can you repeat the foot?
Yeah, go ahead, repeat it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you have any experience that may have helped to promote or foster the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Repeat the whole thing, please. For his sake, I guess.
This is, this is a very diverse city and school district. Do you have any experiences that may have helped to promote or foster the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Yes, I'll talk about three points of interest that can address that. One is my involvement when I was an employee at the City of Grand Rapids. I helped facilitate and led a community education on DEI, and that was really, really important as we wanted to empower the community members or invite community members to participate in a citywide cohort, which we would say, that will allow anywhere, anybody from whatever journey they're on, when they're DEI journey, to participate and bring shared knowledge and learn from a facilitator. The point, or the... The point or the goal of that was to, therefore, they would take the tools that were learned there and go back to the perspective tables and influence that as a whole. At the time, this was no other city was doing any cohort or doing anything of initiative at that time before. So it was very innovative that we were doing that, especially during the pandemic. Another thing that I did was create healing tensions. Again, I kind of alluded that, and I don't need to remind us throughout 2020, but 2020 was a tough year, not just for what we saw as health disparities, but also tensions and police brutality and lives that were interrupted as a result of that. And so I am the type that if I see a problem, I like to come up with a solution to address it. And so internally, we were great with our coworkers. And then all of a sudden, when everything started to kind of erupt around 2020, you can feel some tension internally. And that was a little nerve-wracking and uncomfortable, to be frank. It's almost like everyone was walking on eggshells. No one wanted to say the wrong thing to anybody. And I believe sometimes confrontation is not a negative thing. So I created a series that was called Healing Tensions intentionally. This was a cohort that was intentional to bring staff of the BIPOC community along with our white counterparts to have those tough conversations around what's happening, to really be able to not only have safe space, safe embrace spaces individually, but collectively with that. And so that was a four-week session that was created in partnership with the National Equity PAC. And it was a great experience. In fact, our feedback that we got from that was high. We had over, to volunteer to come to this, first of all, with city employees is a difficult thing. And so we had quite a bit of participants in that, which, from every department, there was one representation, at least one representation from that department. So that was really, really important, and I was proud of that. Also, knowing that safe embrace spaces are not mutually inclusive, but also they help with providing belonging in a workplace. It was important to establish and create ERGs. So prior to, the city did not have any ERGs, which is our, which are employee resource groups. I actually helped create the four that are still in existence as of today. Also, I mentioned Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit, which was intentional in regards to what we did. We also made sure that everyone had a place that they felt belonged there. And so not only were we intentional about creating a healthy environment, we made sure that we have dedicated nursing rooms for mothers or parents, excuse me. We also made sure that we had gender-neutral bathrooms, so those who are non-binary or wherever they fall on the spectrum had a place that they didn't have to feel judged or wondering where they belonged. And so we really were intentional about how we embrace and open that up to community as well. With experience in Grand Rapids, which is my current employer, also, I am over and oversee Diversity Advisory Committee, which is composed of not only industry partners within the hospitality industry, but also everyday citizens. It's intentional for me to make sure that we have a sounding board and the pulse of the city or the heartbeat of our community to make sure that, one, are our marketing efforts on par? Are we representing the community that we serve? And those are really, really important to me. We can easily, especially when it comes to marketing of this great city and students as a whole, we don't want to have something or models, and models are great, don't get me wrong, but also a true reflection of what our city looks like. And so that way, anybody that comes interacts with our city, they'll get a real taste of real residents and what's really happening. So that was really, really important to me. Also, I lead cultural intelligence trainings throughout the organization as well and also with our industry partners. And then, in general, cultural calendars were created. I think it's important to teach and inform people about other cultures and holidays that are significant to them, not necessarily has to be familiar with yourself. But also with BIPOC pop-up shops, as I stated earlier, that have done that not only with the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit, but I've also done that with a few festivals and including the Arena Authority Board for the City of Grand Rapids as well.
Thank you.
What do you think is the most significant factor in academic achievement? And what do you see as contributing to this? And what do you see as the barriers?
Thank you for that question. Significant factors in academic achievement. Two things come into mind for that, not just one. For me, instruction quality and delivery style and parent slash guardian involvement. Particularly, studies have shown that most students do their best when teachers foster a dynamic classroom experience in which they share objectives and guidelines with the students, but let the students lead that conversation. A conversational and structural style helps students use their creativity to apply. The information being taught in a variety of contexts. We also have all set in lectures of some form where you're being talked to in one direction. And we know attention spans can vary or cease to exist after five minutes if it is not captivating that student or the audience that you are participating in. So since knowing that each student has a different learning style, I do believe that incorporating a variety of different lesson deliveries gives each student the opportunity to engage with the material in different ways and also keeps them engaged to really get that learning versus memorization of the material at hand. With the parental and, excuse me, guardian involvement, studies often show that a supportive environment, whether from guardian or wherever that environment is for that student, impacts the student's achievement and academic success. They usually receive higher grades, better attendance, and have better long-term aspirations as a result of that environment that is induced. Now, with both of these, these are factors, but those are also barriers, right? And so one aspect of that could be, the barriers could be teacher burnout, not having enough supplies for that. Curriculum and/or teachings not reflecting the new workforce that is among us, which has shifted since 2020. The barriers with parental and guardian involvement can be food insecurity, displacement, perhaps. Transportation, all those things play a role into that, that can, or unknown factors, actually. So those can be a few, but I don't mean that those are the actual ones. And so I look at that from both ends, but to answer your question, those are the things.
So we have two more scripted questions in about four minutes, and then we will have an opportunity for some follow-up. But question number nine, though, is we currently have a few standing committees on the GRPS board. Those are Academic Achievement, Finance, Legislative, and Policy. Which of these do you see yourself participating in and why? You may select more than one. Academic Achievement, Finance, Legislative, and Policy.
Thank you. I like this question because I actually was doing some deep-dive research and listening to some of your previous videos. And even last week with the ad hoc on the building infrastructure, which I believe is now going to be kind of wide.
Well, actually, no, that will be a committee as well. It's just not a standing committee. But we will have that as ad hoc continuing into 2023. But the standing committees, regardless of calendar year, are the four that I referenced, though.
Awesome, thank you. I think if I have to choose between those four, I think finance will be one of those. I had the liberty, prior to my involvement with the Office of Equity and Engagement at the City of Grand Rapids, I had the ability to work in the Human Resources, which was helping put together a budget of $33.8 million. And so I am financially savvy when it comes to understanding public funding. As well, I would have the ability to extend a three-year grant to a seven-year grant due to my financial abilities that I've learned from that. And so understanding the assets and how to elongate that was something that I never thought I would get told, like, gotta spend the money as a result of that. But I wanted to be very responsible, understand that those were public dollars, and I don't take that lightly regarding those responsibilities. I think the second one would be policy for me, if I had to choose two. I've addressed policies that have been outdated and have been barrier-inducing. And so I'm set on a few task force within the City of Grand Rapids to address those outdated policies. I also have written proclamations on behalf of the City of Grand Rapids. And I also continue to fight for D and I, especially when it comes to accessibility. It also gets kind of second-shelfed when it comes to inclusion. And so really keeping that in mind, not even just when I was at the city, but even currently, like, making sure that that is at the top of forefront, because that's often kind of withdrawn, in a sense. And so I kind of make sure that that is highlighted or stay at the forefront when we're talking about D and I initiatives. So policy and finance.
Great, thank you.
Board of Education members are often approached by a variety, about a variety of issues. Can you help us understand how you will address or respond to a parent who opposes lessons that are a part of our curriculum?
Thank you for that question. I think it's important to make space and time. And diversity of thought is always welcome, and often breeds innovation, like true innovation. So one is to hear the parent's concern, understanding the facts associated with that concern that is presented at hand. I definitely know that oftentimes when people do bring a problem, most likely they have a solution to address that problem. So asking what are their thoughts on addressing the problem that was presented? I am a fact collector, and so for me, I like to get the information. And as a potential member of this body, I think it would also be important to inform the rest of the board members about said issue that was presented by any parent. From that and advice of the council, from the rest of the members, if we need to or feel the need to get administration involved, I think that is also important to bring the associated parties at B, whoever they may be, with that, to make sure. And then also inform the parents back. I think it's important for a level of transparency and communication to keep them informed about the steps where they are in the process of that and to follow up when needed. But also transparency is important. So that's how you continue to garner and gain and build upon the trust. If a parent had a need or felt encouraged to come and address the issue, then I think it's important that we have a very intentional follow-up with that parent and being transparent with that question and the solutions that were brought up before that.
Great, thank you very much. We will, I know we didn't build that time in, but I think it may be prudent to at least allow one or two follow-up questions, if you have anything pressing. Reverend Matthias, it sounded like you had something, if you had a follow-up question. Did you have a follow-up question?
I do, but we can.
That's fine. No, no pressure, just wanted to give the opportunity. Okay, good deal. Since we didn't talk about it, I know you're probably looking at me like, what is this dude doing? But it's all good. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Edman. I don't know if you can stay seated, if you'd like. We will take a couple of minutes to talk about some of your strengths here. If you want to sit there and listen to it, feel free. If you'd like to take your seat back there, feel free. Either way, I don't think we'll have any follow-up questions, as it sounds like. So I don't know. Well, you know, let me ask this. Would we like to talk about these individually, or you want to do a collective thing at the end?
At the end with all three of them in front of us.
Okay. All right, there we go. Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Edman. If you just have a seat there, we'll go ahead and move on to our next candidate.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, if you could be so kind to sit Ms. Vaughn in the lobby, please, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Edman.
Thank you.
Thank you all for that opportunity.
Good evening, Ms. Vaughn, how are you this evening? Good, you have a seat there? Thank you for joining us, and thank you very much for your interest. We have ten scripted questions that we'll sort of round robin and just take turns on asking. We're gonna start to my right, your left, with Dr. Flores. We have 30 minutes, budget it, for our conversation. I'll keep track of the time, though, need to worry about that. If we feel like we're getting close to time, I'll give you a heads up. And otherwise, unless you have any questions or comments about the process, I'll turn it over to Dr. Flores to ask the first question.
All right, welcome, bienvenida. What would you like us to know about you and your reasons or goals or experiences related to seeking appointment on the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education?
I am a diehard GRPS supporter. I am a product of GRPS. I started in elementary. I went to Jefferson and Jefferson to fifth grade, Dickens in my last elementary year. Went to Burton Middle and graduated from Central. I am a RAM, black and yellow.
Try not to hold that against you.
I'm sorry, Coach. In addition to that, like, I mean, I believe that my education from GRPS has afforded me the opportunity to go to and graduate through higher education and return back to support. I support students, scholars, I call them AITs, adults in training, for GRPS all the time. It's like probably my second job that I don't get paid for, but I love it because that's what the kids, or that's what they like. I volunteer for many of your events, including Turkey Trot. I've supported and presented at, like, some of the district's initiatives, such as the G-Cubed, the girls' initiative here through GRPS, the Senior Summit, spoken for that. And I'm always supporting extracurriculars, whether it's athletics and/or recognition programs. If a student asks me to come and I say, and I have the opportunity, I'm going and I'm there. I have been dubbed by people in your district as the mayor of G. And/or some other community organizations. I have the name as the Community Mama, because that's how dedicated I am to supporting the students of Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on how a Board of Education and a district administration should work together?
Well, I've served on boards before, so personally, in my opinion, the way that it works is the board helps support the vision of the assigned executive director, or in this case, superintendent, and to support them to help be, to see their vision to come to success. So our position as board members is to help provide guidance and governance to their vision and to basically keep the big picture, not the daily duties. That's not our job, but keep the main thing. The main thing is what someone says to me. Keep the main thing, main thing, whatever the big picture is, which in this case for the Board of Education would be what's best for the scholars of the district, what's best for the kids and the communities and families that are being served by the Grand Rapids Public Schools District. So that, in my opinion, is what, is how we should handle that.
Please provide examples of how you've worked with our community and/or GRPS schools as a result of that work.
Well, I kind of just told you that, but without being redundant, in addition to, what happens is I am, like, stopped a lot. Or wherever I go, there's students and/or former students that recognize me, and they also reach out to me to make sure that I'm invited to some of their personal life events, whether it's like marriages now, I have, you know, baby showers, graduations, of course. So it has afforded me the opportunity to. So um it has afforded me the opportunity to to establish lifelong relationships with um with with the students that I've that I've had the opportunity to serve and support.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, can you tell us what you know about current district initiatives or priorities? And tell us about any opinions or thoughts that you may have regarding those efforts.
Yeah, I had to go back to school this weekend and do some studying. But from what I found on the GRPS website, your facilities master plan, your strategic plan and your um Grand Rapids Neighborhood Promise are some of the initiatives or the main initiatives that are out there right now. Um, and from what I gathered from the uh from the website, just based upon my comprehension of it and understanding of it, the facilities master plan basically is um an effort to help reduce um the underutilization of of learning spaces in the district. So it sounds like we have too many buildings, not enough students. And that can be attributed to a number of things, but I I say it's probably because um not many people are having as big of a family as they used to back in the day, right? So it's kind of a process, a natural process. Um, it also has the the facilities master plan has the capacity to um help support and improve. Like if you're if you're utilizing the space appropriately, it can help reduce um the staffing challenges that are apparent or at least have been reported in the district, as well as it can also help to reduce money that is being um for a lack of a better term, but not to sound so harsh, wasted because the buildings aren't being utilized um efficiently, right? Um, and then I read that upon what I read that um it would also allow the district to leverage real estate that they have. And then I also heard this at the board meeting last time, leverage real estate that they have to create ways that will help support the communities, um hopefully utilizing the community's voice, but help um provide in different ways in which to utilize that space. The strategic plan is the one that had received, in my opinion, the most most publicity. And it's um focused on six different pillars is the terminology um that basically wants to help um meet and do what's right and what's best for the students of the district. Um, meeting their holistic needs, um making sure that they have um voice in that as well. Um, it says optimizing and value all school options, so making sure that each and every school is an option, not just certain schools, from what I understand, like the theme schools versus the neighborhood schools. It's making sure that they're all um have are are valued valued options for families in the district or in the community. Um, and these, I mean, you have four other ones, I don't need to tell you about it because you already know. But um there are six, um, you have six um measurable ways in which you're for outcomes that will share that will show whether or not that strategic plan is working. So I know about that one, or that's what I learned about that one. And then um one thing I do want to say though about the strategic plan is that I I went to one of the meetings, one of the um the meetings that was held for that. And I really um I really, I asked the question personally if student voices would be heard. So to hear that that is going to be a part of it is really, really, really um important to me. And I just think it's powerful because as adults, there's this term called adultism, which is real. Like we feel sometimes, and I'm just gonna say I feel sometimes, I used to feel sometimes that because I said so was the was the way that it is, but we are dealing with a different generation that'd be like, and? Just because you said so, that doesn't mean anything. And they do know better or many times what they what what they need better than we do because we're not in their shoes. We can, we can make assumptions from the outside, but that doesn't always um pan out the way that we would want it to be just because we think that we know. And then finally, the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Promise, which is a twenty-nine and a half million dollar wow opportunity um collaborative effort between higher education, GRPS and um local community-based organizations. I believe um that initiative has the um opportunity to to just be really, really impactful. If we if if what they said and about it approaching and serving the students from a holistic perspective, which is more like a case management perspective, each person individually, you know, whatever they need and not just like a cookie cutter, um I think it will have great um benefits and outcomes for the different students that we serve in this in this district.
Discuss your thoughts on charter schools, vouchers and public education.
So personally, I believe that every person or every family, every parent, caretaker, they have a cho choice. They have the right to choose what they want for their child because as a parent, I wouldn't want nobody telling me. However, like I said before, I am a product of a public school. I advocate for GRPS public schools and I am a hundred percent behind public school. Vouchers and charters kind of from what I read upon it or read about it, they have the potential to um possibly engage in some discriminatory practices versus public schools where everyone is welcome and everyone can be served. So for me, I'm a proponent for public schools. I'm a proud product. Back in the day, you know, we had really, really good education at Central. I'm gonna I'm gonna give a shout out to Ms. Randolph, my fifth grade teacher and Mr. Atkinson, my sixth grade teacher. So that's where I stand. Vouchers and charters, no discrimination, yes.
Kind of along that same theme, uh what do you see as the most pressing issues facing GRPS? And what are the strategies, uh strategies do you think the board should undertake to address that issue?
Can you repeat that for me, when the first part, I'm sorry, the door.
So what do you see as the most pressing issue facing GRPS? And what strategies do you think the board should undertake to address that issues, those issues?
I would say probably, just in my opinion from outside looking in, one of the pressing issues would probably be academic achievement. It's publicized in the in the in the media. And then also I would say uh out of school opportunities for for our youth. Yeah, there's Loop and that's nice. And I used to be a manager for Loop for several years. However, additional opportunities as they get older um into middle school, high school. And we do have some, so don't let me, don't, don't, don't let me um take away from what we do have. But there, I believe there additional opportunities um would be helpful, like exposure to like um themes such as like um a debate club, right? Or um robotics in high school versus this, I want to say it's middle school right now that I've seen um the robotics club and debate, science olympiads, like just across the board. Because those types of activities, um, I believe helps strengthen the social emotional intelligence of students, helps improve their critical thinking skills and just basically provides other life skills that are necessary as they as they grow up. In addition to athletics, um, so I'm a I'm a I'm an athletic fan. I think that um although there's been some work towards um improving like the gym spaces, just making sure that the um the students have a you know, great practice facilities, um so that they can be able to, I mean, practice facilities, workout facilities, so that they can also be competitive with it within their conferences. Um, even just with stu uh other schools in around the area, around the Grand Rapids Public School or the Grand Rapids Metropolitan area. The research strongly supports that students that are engaged in extracurriculars have higher higher grades. They do, they have better attendance because usually those activities have some type of requirements um associated with them. So they strive to meet those requirements. And um in addition, it many times, at least from my experience in conversations with um some of the AITs, it provides a sense of safety and family because some of them have a different um just just different situations in which they have to navigate that are outside of school.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this is a very diverse city and school district. Do you have any experiences that may have helped to promote or foster the values of diversity, equity and inclusion?
So um I've been to probably just about, I've I've served and volunteered in probably just about every single high school here. And each high school has its own culture. And um so uh the diversity is there and there's a lot of diversity. I was just out in the lobby waiting and there's a, there's a um poster on the wall that shows that GRPS serves about fifty-eight or fifty-nine different countries, have students from fifty-eight or fifty-nine different countries. When when I engage with with students um from from the district, I always encourage them and um support them in being proud of their national, their their heritage. So I am intentional and try to make sure I provide a safe space for them to be them regardless of where we're at. And that might include small things, just like making sure I'm saying their name correctly. Um, if it's a a unique name that may not be custom to me, I like, we go through it. Help me say it syllable by syllable so that I can try to make sure that their their name is pronounced correctly. I could encourage them to to speak in their um in their native language, um if they if they so feel comfortable to do it. And then in doing that, I also make sure that I create an environment, a safe space with the other people who may be around so that we can embrace that because just because, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion is always thrown around, right? But just because something is diverse doesn't mean that it's equitable, if that makes sense, right? And just because it's diverse doesn't mean that we want it, that that's that that space is inclusive as well. So um I try to make all people feel comfortable enough so that even when they when they share about themselves, usually that sparks a conversation and inquiries from others about, oh, wow, that's kind of, you know. I had a student that um that I served at GRCC that was a student from Grand Rapids Public Schools that spoke five languages. Like this was a a junior that spoke five languages fluently, right, from um from um from Kenya. And once like, once we found that out, like the whole class was just like asking questions and, you know, and he was answering um the questions and and just engaging in a in a cultural experience, basically, just by making sure that when I say their name or ask about them, that it's genuine.
What do you think is the most significant factor in academic achievement? What do you see as contributing to this and what do you see as barriers to this?
I feel like I kind of answered part of that a little earlier, but um in in addition to like um out of school opportunities and school facilities, like that's a load of question. There's not just one thing, like a like several things. Um, but I also feel like safety is important. Um, unfortunately, GRPS gets a bad rap, like for for whatever reason, I don't know if someone has it out, but if something something is is a re in GRPS, it is like on the news all the time and that's just not cool, in my opinion. But other districts can have similar incidents and we won't hear about it unless you know someone from that district. But but just school safety, for um that's that's physical and emotional safety, not just physical, but both physical and emotional safety, which um would allow students to feel comfortable um and want to come to school, right? Um, so that they can engage in the learning process. And that also impacts their mental health. I mean, COVID has exposed a whole lot um for not just, not just the AITs, but for adults as well. And so if you if they're not feeling safe, then that's just another another thing on them that's preventing them from being fully engaged in the learning process. Um, and that's not what, and that's gonna impact the outcomes with their grades, right? The support, I believe, the holistic support, I do believe um Grand Rapids Public Schools is working to provide holistic support, but it needs to ma, it should be, in my opinion, um, it should be a collaboration between parents and class uh and the schools, right? So that's the teachers, the administration of the of the of the building and also the parents. Um, teachers having teachers who believe in and are invested in the success of all of the AITs is very important. Teachers who work to develop relationships. And that might be a challenge sometimes be or right now because of the teacher shortage. And that's been in the news as well, right? The 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 shortage of available educators for the for the um students. But just and not only that, making sure we have teachers that are capable of um so good teachers that are capable and able to recognize how to serve the population of their classroom, right? Because not all students learn the same. So making sure they ha have the skill set to recognize that and to implement different teaching styles to go along with the different learning styles in the classrooms. And um I did say the school facilities, but that means up to date technology. It means um staff in the buildings that that again, they're invested, but also reflective of a population that's being served. If we have fifty-eight different countries being served, we need to mimic that in the in the learning environment because just like adults, like when you are with someone that that you can kind of relate to easier, you feel more at ease, you feel less anxious and you're more open to conversations and maybe even building rapport with that person versus someone that's different. Now, it's great to have the diversity and, you know, but it's also great to have people that look like you so that you can, you can see you being maybe even in that position or something else easier.
Thank you. We currently have standing committees for academic achievement, finance, legislative and policy. On which of these do you see yourself participating and why? You may select more than one. Academic, you got them?
I looked it up, yeah. I was looking up everything, trying to find everything on the website. Like I said, I feel like I was back in school this weekend. Personally, for me, I probably would do academic achievement because that is is really, really, really important to me. I feel like um a solid academic or educational foundation helps produce interest and excitement in learning for for um the AITs of the district as well as um it will help to cultivate higher self-esteem, which can lead to a more successful academic experience. And in addition, it can um strengthen the life skills of conflict resolution and or also um critical thinking, that's what I was gonna say, critical thinking that is necessary. When you when you're excited about learning um and you learn what you need to learn, it's easier to think critically through different types of situations or at least be willing to problem solve or to to engage in that type of process instead of getting frustrated and just being, forget it, I quit. Because that's run into a lot, even at the like at the level of side adjunct at a local, at the community college. And some students have that mindset, like when they're coming in from high school, like, well, this is too hard, never mind, forget it. Well, no, we can work through this. So I believe that foundational education is huge because it helps prepare, prepare them from from school to whether it's higher education or to earn a career track, whether that's, you know, a trade school or their entrepreneurship, whatever that may be for them.
So yeah, the question was um which of the, well, you don't have to, they say you can select more than one, but you don't have to.
Oh, okay.
No, you don't have to.
No, I don't want to select another one. That's a lot of words.
I will let you know that all of us are on at least two, though.
Yeah.
So yeah, yeah.
So so if I have to select another one, you had academic, you had. You had academic, you had legislative, you said...
Finance and policy.
Finance and policy.
This is an interview question, though, you don't have to select today, so if you have answered the question, if you don't want to... I want to give you that, you have answered it.
The last question is, a board of education members are often approached about a variety of issues. Can you help us understand how you would address or respond to a parent who opposes lessons that are part of our curriculum?
So, yeah, I can imagine that happening to you guys a lot. I would probably listen, first of all, because when people come to you, they want to be heard. So just listening to people completely and through, reassuring them that you're listening, and whatever that concern is, I would, I would personally probably try to direct them to the correct department resource or whatever that is available, too, so that they can get their, their concerns addressed. So, yeah, basically, that's really it, because it's not, I don't, I don't do curriculum, so I would encourage, I would help direct them in the right way.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any burning follow-up questions for Ms. Vaughn? If you're obligated. All right, Ms. Vaughn, well, thank you very much for your time. We do have one more candidate.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is, for this board, what are your, what is your greatest challenge as a board member? I'm gonna ask you, since you was asking the last question. There you go, Raynor.
My greatest challenge is being patient with the sometimes glacial progress of change.
Someone else want to answer? Reverend Matthias?
I would say that the greatest challenge is to, one of the greatest challenges is to, for us as a board, to continue to remember that we serve a whole community. And so with a lot of the changes that we're seeing now in our society, it's reflected in our schools, too. And so we, we have to make sure that we are listening to really all of our voices, and not just some.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, what are you looking for in a board member?
Well...
Dr. Flores.
What was the question?
What are you looking for in a board member?
You know, I think, I think you have a lot of the skills that we're looking for, and I think what we've heard tonight from candidates in general, you know, our previous candidate, too, have a lot of things. I personally am looking for someone who can, who can bring true diversity, the perspective of true diversity, and I think it's very easy to lip service that. And I think that sometimes, you know, we fail to challenge the status quo, the traditional power brokers at the table, and truly move our district toward embracing diversity. We have a changing demographic that we serve, and there needs to be true representation across the board. And if we can't get at the ballot box, you know, which I think we will one day, you know, because we've, we've seen the development of critical masses in our, in our population, our student population, our parent population, in our city, and I think it's just a matter of time. So I'm looking for futuristic change agents, and so that's my bottom line.
Am I on time?
Yes, thank you.
Because he was looking at me like, don't ask no more questions. Thank you guys for...
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis is going to take advantage of a quick break to the restroom, if anyone needs to do the same.
It's a fun time.
Thank you, Ms. Stephens. We have one of our colleagues step to the restroom, if you just be patient with us. But you can have a seat, thank you. All right. So, Ms. Stephens, we have 30 minutes set aside for our conversation. Don't worry about the time, I'll keep the time if we go over, that's definitely not a problem. We do have 10 scripted questions, we'll rotate around to ask those questions. We'll probably start with, we'll start with Ms. Lewis on question number one, and work our way around, and then Reverend Matthias, you have question number six, and we'll continue through that format. And when we're done with you, we will do a highlight of strengths of the different candidates, definitely more than welcome to have a seat in the audience while we do that, and we will be making a selection tonight. So unless you have any questions of us, all right, we'll get started with you then, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening. What would you like us to know about you and your reasons, goals, or experience related to seeking an appointment on the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education?
A lot, hopefully. I'd like to say that this is one of my biggest passions, really trying to work with the youth in Grand Rapids has been one of my, the forefront of my career for nearly all of it. Really, even before it was my career, I used to volunteer at Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Academy. I've coached football in the district, I am a success coach, have worked in Union High School for the past four years. I see firsthand what our students go through in their struggles to get to that next level, and help them in that transition to higher education, or to really whatever post-secondary education looks like for them, or post-secondary planning. I am staunch advocate for equity among our schools. If you look at the top of any of my cover letters for the past five years, it says that my primary objective was to increase equitable access to higher education for our community, regardless of what position I was going for, essentially. That's really what I'm about, is trying to help our students to succeed in whatever goals they have. I'm a big proponent of working through them on hope interventions, and I really see so much potential in not only our students, but our district, and where it could be. I'm a Grand Rapids native, a graduate of GRPS. My son is going to be starting in kindergarten in the fall. We just got the letter today, saying he got in. So I'm really passionate about doing everything I can to help the students of GRPS.
All right, thank you. Can you tell us your thoughts on how the Board of Education and district administration should work together?
I think that a key, that communication is key between administration and the board. I think that being able to have effective administration means being able to understand the will of the people, and I think it's the board's job to be able to represent that. Administration has a tough job to do. They can't be meeting with people all the time and understand all the needs of the community, and I hope that a diverse board is able to represent that will of that community, and be able to be that outreach, connect with the different community organizations, and let them know that we hear them, that we're there to represent them, that we can build those connections. They always say it takes a village to raise a child, and I think it's part of the board's job to connect with the administration and be that bridge to not only community partners, but to the people that, at times, to be frank, there may be a disconnect from.
Thank you.
Please provide examples of how you have worked in our community or with GRPS schools as a result of that, and the results of that work.
So I mentioned coaching football, I didn't mention those football, but I coached football at Union for several years. Well, we won't have the scores of the games as the results for that work, but I saw a significant change in those student athletes. I still am connected with many of them to this day. I am a success coach at GRCC, specifically with the Chandler Scholars Program, so I've been in Union High School for the past four-plus years in a variety of roles, largely helping students to plan for their next, next goals after high school. And we've seen tremendous increase in college readiness, college acceptance, college pursuit in general, and that's even with COVID throwing a whole wrench into that mix. I have a huge passion for this population that I've worked with, with Union specifically. Had tremendous changes both through that and with two colleges, through college program, connected with them to work with our GRPS grads. As you all know, we implemented Promise Zone at GRCC, the Promise Zone Scholarship, so I've worked tremendously to try to build a program around that, working with our Promise Zone directors, to work with students from all over GRPS besides just Union, and their plans after high school. I've worked on preparing the Exito Eductivo program with Michigan State in our, some of our schools, and trying to work on better supporting our Latino students. It's hard to say the results of a lot of the stuff that's still up in the air. I'm currently working on how we can better support our English language learners as they prepare in their transition to higher education, too. But it's a dynamic movement process, and it's a process that I'm committed to continuing to work on.
Thank you. What do you know about current district initiatives or priorities? Tell us about any opinions or thoughts you may have regarding those efforts.
So I know that there has been more of a shift towards higher education, pursuit and attainment. I know that we've done a great job as a district to increase graduation rates, and I think that's tremendous. But unfortunately, in today's society, high school diploma doesn't get you much after, in terms of career attainment. So I think having that post-secondary plan, whether it be career-focused or degree-oriented, is huge. Talk about hope. Hope not just as some metaphysical concept, but hope as a cognitive motivational theory, and being able to help them have an ideal future self and concrete steps on how to get there is tremendously important. So I think I've seen firsthand how many students are not necessarily prepared for post-secondary education, whether it be that they don't know what they want to go for, why they want to go there, they don't understand all the red tape to get through there, or they may not be academically prepared. I mentioned working with the ELL, our English language learner population. I can't tell you how many students I've worked with that have graduated with a degree and test too low to take our lowest level of ESL course, English as a Second Language course at GRCC, and how much hope they lose when they see that they don't really have very many places to turn to, to support them. So I think that the shift towards that post-secondary goal, I'm a proponent of higher education, first and foremost, I don't think it necessarily means it needs to be a bachelor's degree, but I think there are so many different programs out there that can help our students to identify some type of career and find utility in that form of post-secondary planning that they do. And I think that the shift towards that from the focus on just graduation rates is huge for the district.
Okay. Could you discuss your thoughts on issues of charter schools, vouchers, and public education?
Yeah, I can. Try to keep this all PG. I think that most charter schools are intentioned well, that they want to have, serve a good purpose, that the people who start them have idealistic goals to help, help their community. Unfortunately, when you take students out of the school system, require students to provide their own transportation to school, remove busing, take parents who have the means to get more involved in the school and do that, and have them switch over to a charter school from the public education district, it severely harms the district. You know, you can look at the statistics, and they, they can pick and choose and do a nice little commercial saying, oh, yeah, our students compete or perform better than the public district on X, Y, and Z test. But really, you're never comparing apples to oranges. Or you are comparing apples to oranges, I should say. I think that public education is one of the best tools we have to fight inequity in our community, and that a strong public education system is important. I can get the frustration with school districts at times in wanting to potentially send a child to a charter school or something that you feels, feel better aligns with what you want for your child, but when you build a school around values or virtues, as most of our charter schools do, you've got to look at what's baked into those as well. You have these preconceived notions of what education should be, and we all have these biases that come into play, and most of them are built with, built on the backs of many different prejudices. And I think you see that more often than not come true in many of the charter schools or parochial schools that come to play, even though it's not intentioned, and I think that it often comes as a detriment to the public school system.
Thank you. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing GRPS? And what strategies do you think that the board should undertake to address that or those issues?
I would say the most pressing issue facing GRPS is the inequity of Grand Rapids. I mean, Grand Rapids has been extremely segregated for generations. I mean, we look at the academic performance, we look at the socioeconomic performance of the southeast side compared to the other areas of Grand Rapids, and how redlining connects to so much of that. We see inequity again and again play out, and that seems like it's pushing towards a precipice that could be hard to overcome. I think that as a board, we would need to do more to provide for support in early education. I think, obviously, anything we can do to support pre-kindergarten, pre-K, and early developmental stages has shown statistically to improve reading rates and graduation rates later on in life. But you look at the ripple effects that that has for our community as a whole, being able to provide, I don't want to say childcare, because obviously we... being able to provide, I don't want to say childcare, because obviously we know that education is so much more than childcare, but allowing for families to really believe that my child can be productive, can be in a safe place that they are learning and growing allows the parents to focus on so much more. I think we are having a lot more wealthier families being more comfortable to move back into Grand Rapids, but we know Grand Rapids is very religious and very giving at times, but many of the families do send their kids to parochial schools if they are comfortable moving back in, do want to go to a charter school because of the stereotypes and the preconceived notions that they have about public school. I can't tell you, my child is, my wife would hate me for saying this, but it's currently at GRCC preschool. She said, "Don't let her know where the Pigs are going." But all the students in my class, all the students in his class, I talk with their parents about where they're sending their kids to kindergarten, and they have their kid in the center of Grand Rapids right now, and no one in his class is sending their kids to GRPS. So they're shocked to hear me talk about it. And so that's not just equity, that's preconceived notions, but that comes back to the segregation and the bias and discrimination that is rampant in West Michigan, unfortunately. As far as how we solve that, that's a lot of work beyond what just the board can control. But as I mentioned, having a diverse board that represents various areas of the community that can build those bridges and connections beyond just what your role is in the school board. I know all of you are super involved in the community and that's why you take on this work. But building those connections so that more people can see the good work that's being done. I mentioned not having parents, families that are more well-to-do and able to provide more for their children, being paired off into districts in the suburbs or stolen off into charter schools and parochial schools, showing them that your child's best opportunity for growth is going to be in Grand Rapids and helping them see the value of diversity and equity. I always say that I can help teach my child any of the subjects if they're struggling on anything, not that they would need it, I think Grand Rapids is a great school district, but there are so many lessons that students are going to miss out on if they take their children to another district, especially in the suburbs of Grand Rapids, that they need to see. And I think that that's part of this board's duty is to help get that message out to the public.
Thank you.
What do you think is the most significant factor in academic achievement? And what do you see as contributing to this? And what do you see as the barriers?
So I think hope is the most important factor, and a lot plays into that. Again, I don't want this to seem like some broad, like generic, hope is the answer to it, but that cognitive motivational, some of the key factors that play into that are having teachers that believe in you. I mean, there's studies that show that African-American male students feel less supported by their teachers than their Caucasian peers, that they feel more put down. I mean, you look at how many students that have been disparaged at some point in their academic career and lose focus. The idea of hope as, "I know what I want to do, I believe that I can get out of here." I can't tell you how many athletes I talked to that were playing football that said, "Oh yeah, this is my only way out of here," you know? And I don't know how closely, I didn't coach Union this year, I coached a couple of years ago, but y'all may have seen the record, like most of those players were not getting any D1 scholarships. But they believed that athletics was the only way they could get out of there. I talk with the juniors and seniors doing career exploration. I ask them how many careers they think there are in the world. I get answers from 200 to 2 million. The latest estimates are 30,000 to 40,000, in case you're wondering. But then I ask the entire class, like in five minutes, to list off every career that they could think of. And I've yet to have a class come up with more than 100 careers. That's on average about how many our careers our students are aware of when they graduate. Most of our students don't have relationships with many professionals in their life. So having a concept that Ideal Future Self I was talking about really is tremendously important for hope. And that starts early on. You know, talking about college or post-secondary education, talking about something that helps them visualize their future is huge. Now, that can be a tremendous struggle when you've got to focus on surviving day to day. We know how many of our students rely on GRPS for breakfast and lunch, you know? I'm not going to be thinking about what I'm going to be doing when I'm 20, 25, when I'm a 10-year-old that's focused on where I'm going to get my next meal. So providing that safety and security for them to dream, for them to believe, providing them with teachers that are culturally competent so that they don't put them down and they believe in them and make the students believe in themselves. I think those are huge pieces that play into student success. I think honestly, if a student believes that they can be successful in school, reading and math are not going to be a major challenge for them. If they're safe, secure, have what they need, and have people that believe in them and support them and communicate them with the way that they understand, I think that they can achieve all those things. So one word, hope is the most important thing towards success.
Thank you. So Mr. Stevens, this is a diverse city and school district. I think you may have alluded to some of this, but can you tell us about experiences that you may have that have helped promote or foster values of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So I mentioned working in Union High School closely with the Chandler Scholars Program. I think some like 40 different languages are represented in Union High School. So being able to provide students with their individual needs, I think, is huge. I think that my work with GRCC has largely been focused on increasing equity, equitable access to higher education. I'm hoping that very soon we'll be starting our equity team for the Student Success and Retention Division that I have been tapped to lead for that. I led a program, or a college action project at GRCC to identify and recruit opportunity youth, so that's anyone 16 to 24 that's not working or in school. Because we recognize to serve our community at CC, we need to be more intentional about equitable access. That led me to connection with so many different cities and best practices and so many wonderful organizations and members of our community to try to increase our equitable access to higher education. Working with diverse populations, like I said, Union honestly is probably about as diverse as you get. We get almost all of the English language learners in the district. I shouldn't say almost all, that's hyperbole a little bit, but because we have the newcomers program at Union High School, we get a significant majority of those students. We have worked with every race, every religion, so many different career goals out there. And I think about diversity is so much more than just race, religion, things that you can see, but so many different perspectives and views and dreams out there. I work with students going in every direction under the sun. And I like to think that my heart has gone to serve them all in their unique needs as best as I can and that I've fought tooth and nail at times with administration to try to make sure that, from where I stand, that I'm using my power to better serve these students and so that they're able to get the equitable support that they need.
Thank you.
We currently have standing committees for academic achievement, finance, legislative, and policy. Which of these do you see yourself participating in, and why? And you may select more than one.
Sorry, could you repeat all of them again?
Academic achievement, finance, legislative, and policy.
I would like to say the two that jump out the most at me are the finance and the academic achievement. I do have an undergraduate degree in business economics, have a graduate degree in business. I'm working on a second master's in data analytics right now. So numbers come sort of naturally to me, and I think that in order to be able to do all the wonderful things that a district needs to do, we have to make sure that we are managing finances correctly. Not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but I think that my eye for numbers might be of assistance for that. As far as academic achievement is concerned, that's my bread and butter, that's where my passion lies. I always say I'm a coach in everything I do, being a success coach by trade, but just naturally helping students get to where they want to get to. That is my purpose in life, it really is. I would like to grow more in understanding policy and legislation. But honestly, finance and academic achievement, those are both my wheelhouse, and I would love to do everything I can to support that.
Thank you.
Board of Education members are often approached about a variety of issues. Can you help us understand how you would address or respond to a parent who opposes lessons that are a part of our curriculum?
I always think everyone should work in customer service at some point in their life. I think that customer service jobs are, like those foundations of customer service really teach you how to deal with disgruntled people. I myself worked at Buffalo Wild Wings as a youngster, the one downtown, so I got to deal with all the fun people late at night, you know, on Ionia. But angry people often want to be heard first and foremost. They want to know that even if you don't agree with them, that you value them enough to hear out their opinion. And so taking the time to understand why they're frustrated and not dismiss them is first and foremost. Obviously, there are certain things that should be taught, that need to be taught for us to produce productive members of society, because education is about more than reading, writing, and math. You know, we can't hide the truth, we can't hide history, we can't hide all these facts. But if you are able to take time with people that are upset about curriculum and try to understand where their point, what their point of view is, and try to help them come up with some type of resolution that is amenable to them, even if it's not perfect for them, is great. And if you can't come up with an amenable solution for them, you help them understand the process that goes about these decisions. Most people, I like to think, are rational, even if we don't always see them that way, especially in the heated moment. But if you can take the time to show them that you're a human and that you recognize their humanity and recognize their frustration, you get a lot further in de-escalating it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Stevens, that is my final scripted question. I guess like the others, I ask anyone who had any burning follow-ups that they felt compelled to ask. There being none, so thank you, Mr. Stevens. You can have a seat there wherever you like. We will take some time now to kind of discuss the highlights of all the candidates. I guess before we do that, any of my colleagues, anyone need a quick break?
Yes.
Do? All right, let's just make that pretty quick. I guess we have been sitting there a couple of hours, so we'll just give a five-minute break for you to do what you need to do there, and I think I will finally excuse us, please. All right, so I guess the fun parts begin. I guess before we get started, thank you all three of you for your genuine interest, your passion, the insight and intelligence you displayed this evening. I know coming into it, I think all of us were, maybe I'll speak for myself, maybe just mildly anxious about really being able to select one of three. I don't know, frankly, I have personally some sort of relationship with each of you and have a great amount of respect for all three of you for different reasons and definitely not an easy thing to do this evening, but a good thing I don't have to do it by myself. So I do have a collective, and that's why we have boards. So what we're going to do now, we're going to, as awkward as it may seem, we're going to talk about you, you know, while you're sitting here. But we are going to just go around and offer strengths that stood out to us for each as we proceed through our conversation. we proceed through our conversation. If someone, you know, wants to offer emotion at some point after we go through all three, any of us have the opportunity to do so. And I guess we'll just see how that plays out. So we'll go in order. We'll start with Mr. Eaton, and if anybody wants to start to offer things that stood out, that they find impressive about Mr. Eaton, please feel free.
What I found most impressive about him was the fact that he has all of this familiarity with the city of Grand Rapids and all of his connections with the city of Grand Rapids. And that can be very important to us as we try to form coalitions and do the kinds of things that we need to reach out to not just the public school students, but all the people who live here in Grand Rapids who need to know how successful Grand Rapids Public Schools really are.
Great, thank you.
I was appreciative that he had a sound grasp on our district initiatives and priorities at this point, as well as he brought up the importance of trust, removing barriers, and the excellence, equity, and empowerment. I thought that was important, that he shared that information as well. And then the piece where he discussed the importance of lifting up student voice, and I know that's something that we are focused on as well, and to hear him share that as well, tells me he has been following some of the work that we're doing.
So as I think about the work ahead, really, in the next year or two, the facilities master plan taking a lead on really complex decisions we're gonna make across a very diverse system and across very diverse structures, I appreciated about Mr. Eaton, certainly his work that he's done at the city. And as I think about our efforts to continue to grow our sophistication and community engagement, I saw many strengths in the work that he has done in the work in neighborhoods, which is where we need to go to build trust and consensus around the decisions that we'll make in these next two years. I also appreciated his engagement with Ottawa Hills, because that is a priority, I hope, for this board moving forward, and knowing that he's committed to the Hospitality Academy was a strength for me. And as the treasurer, I'm delighted to know that finance was a priority. And that goes hand in hand with this facilities master plan work. We have nearly a quarter of a billion-dollar budget, and it is complex and complicated, and so I appreciated those strengths.
Yeah, I'm of the same perspective with respect to Mr. Eaton's accomplishments, the groups that he's worked with, certainly a wide variety of groups. The Neighborhood Summit and some of the other initiatives that he has taken on, his familiarity with DEI, and the commitment to fight for those issues. And then certainly with a strong finance background, that's important. I see his strengths as systems thinking. I think that he looks beyond issues, looks for the resolve, provided some strategies or significant, specific strategies that he would engage in and that he has engaged in. I think he'd be an asset.
Yeah, I heard some, for example, pushback when he was confronted with some things, working for the city, building trust. And so I appreciated that. I also saw, really looking at equipping and engaging transparency. I heard him talk about that our students aren't being engaged enough, which we certainly have seen that, you know, currently on the board and in our schools to some extent. I appreciated him mentioning healing tensions, and so it wasn't just, although it looks black and white, and the emphasis is typically that, but there are Hispanics and foreigners in this, in the city, refugees. And so it's not easy to look at those pieces and then finding solutions for that. I heard something, not all confrontation is bad, and so there is room for acknowledging that, but then also, how do we find solutions? Because we are a community, so I appreciated that as well.
You know, I think what I found impressive was a variety of leadership experiences, you know, everything from the community-oriented Neighborhood Summits, and all of that work largely being about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and really just trying to broaden, I guess, really, life experiences for folks in the community. And all the way down to some of the smaller examples, even like the community calendars, which really just showed a range of perspective, at least from our perspective, a range of perspective from, you know, really wide-reaching activities to some of the small even sort of detail sort of things. You know, I think one of the things that really stood out to me, though, was the question about significant factors in academic achievement. And I do personally think that it's really exactly that, instructional quality, delivery style, and parental involvement. And, you know, I think that really, in my perspective, hits the nail on the head, but also understanding the barriers and the sort of things that can work against or undermine, I guess, getting those things done. So I just think that was really a good critical thinking and wide perspective, broad perspective, but also a perspective that was, showed the ability to be focused on solutions and problem-solving as well. So anyone want to add anything else before we move to Ms. Vaughn? Okay, we will sing the praises of Ms. Vaughn, and we can start with whoever may be interested.
I want to jump in, because what you, Ms. Vaughn was a quiet force. And what I will say that a lot of things were said, but there was one thing that resonated with me most was when she said, "What's best for our scholars." I was done. I was done. I heard a lot of great things from you, from Ms. Vaughn, on a lot of things, things I hadn't necessarily heard of or thought of, but to hear "what's best for our scholars" just wooed me, if I can just say that.
Go in order. Again, with the lens of looking forward to the work ahead, the assets that I heard from Ms. Vaughn really is being known and showing up. This work, the work of disrupting a district through a facilities master plan requires trust and coalition building, as I've mentioned. And because there is already trust in Ms. Vaughn throughout the district, from scholars to families, I know that that would be an asset in having her serve alongside us on the board. I too underlined and starred valuing scholar voice, as that is such a priority for this board and certainly our superintendent as well. And so that is in line with something that we really value. And as a parent of a student athlete, I was delighted to hear about the emphasis and importance of out-of-school programs and athletics for our scholars and the impact that has on the outcomes that they have in their life. So those are the strengths that I heard.
Well, I think she'd make an interesting board member, because the way I took in everything she was saying was that if she has this background in counseling, and she seemed to have a real understanding of what has happened to our kids as a result of the pandemic and the kinds of things that need to be done in terms of their social and emotional health. And I just think having someone like that on the board would be a real plus because of her counseling background.
Right.
I like her, the fact that she has life experiences and having attended Jefferson, Burton, and Central. I attended Burton and Central, too. But I think overall, you know, she's extended her heart and her time to helping our students, you know, being called the mayor of Grand Rapids Public Schools or the community mama. That's, you know, there's certainly terms of endearment that our students have. However, you know, working closely with students, I like what she said about creating a safe place for diversity and for even students who speak other languages, looking at the 59 different countries and trying to promote pride and heritage. Those things do speak volumes for respecting diversity and actually applying it in your daily work. I like the fact that she has, you know, the strong counseling background and brings those perspectives to our district. I think she'd be an excellent asset also. So those are my comments.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, some of the strengths that I noticed were her desire to continue to see, I think, academic achievement and really taking it a step or another level. Out-of-school opportunities, I heard a lot of desires to see things like robotics and other arenas that we currently have, but typically those are, well, anyway. So I saw that expanding, that or looking at things that keep students engaged, making people feel comfortable. And so I heard that aspect of really being able to accept people where they're at. Academic achievement, I think I listed that already, listening to parents. Good teaching, so sounding like support for our teachers. So if our teachers can be trained in a way that allows them to be good teachers, it's gonna ripple effect or trickle effect to the students, too, in achievement.
Thank you. For me, a couple things stood out to Ms. Vaughn. I think listening to your responses, it was evident to me that at least there was an understanding of the balance of board governance and sort of the, you know, really what is under the power and influence of the board and the commitment that a board, in my opinion, should have, almost must have, in supporting the executive leader of a district, you know, and pointing out that support also has an element of accountability. But again, it is really just that is support. If you have sort of a board and an executive staff member who don't operate well together, that's really just, frankly, a recipe for disaster. So at least understanding that element was a highlight of her responses. And also for me, though, similar to most, being a sports junkie, I was excited to hear somebody else maybe loves the athletic realm as much as I do, but also understanding the importance of some of those other out-of-school activities, you know, debate, robotics, science Olympia, for example. So the balance of that, I think, from a, was really just encouraging to me, for sure. And that brings us to last, but certainly not least, or I guess before I move away from Ms. Vaughn, any other thing that anyone did have? So moving to Mr. Stephens and standouts or attention areas or strengths that you may have noted from Mr. Stephens. Anyone like to go first? You would? Okay.
Getting a bit out of here.
Go ahead.
I was most impressed by Mr. Stephens' passion for education. It was evident when he was up here talking about everything he talked about. And of course, I like the fact that he was very concerned about pre-primary and early childhood development, as well as what do these kids do and how can we help them when they leave us? And how can we make them, help them be successful if they go to college or if they take a vocation? So those two ends. And of course, I did like the fact that he was a coach, too. I do sort of like that, too.
Thank you.
I like the fact that, again, his passion, much like was said here, and he certainly expressed a lot of that in all of his work. I also liked his perspectives on Grand Rapids, who are very honest and on point, you know, those things that we have to improve, and then his strategies for improving it, and then demonstration of his commitment in coaching to a diverse population. I think that those are certainly attributes that would make him an asset. I think he's, his work with Community College and trying to guide students to more than just one type of a profession or career, you know, vocation, I think that's a good perspective. And that was one of the assets I found in his presentation. It certainly left me thinking of, yes, there's hope. And I think that's important in our educational desires for our students. So bringing better, bringing people together for understanding and then de-escalating some of the conflict, I thought that was a real nice touch in his presentation. So I think he certainly would be an asset.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really valued Mr. Stephens' response to how a board and administration should work together, and that it's the board's job to represent the will of the people and to act as a connector so that the administration knows and hears from their community through a board member. So that was a strength for me. Like Ms. Lewis, I was grateful to hear about an emphasis on early education support and access to pre-K and kindergarten. That is very important for our scholars and hopefully something that will strengthen over the next few years in GRPS. And certainly just experience working in our system, I really valued. So knowing that you've been committed long before applying for the appointment was a strength for me.
I like that he talked about communication and that bridge piece that Jim mentioned as well, that's definitely important in the work that we do. And then that he does have experience with working with students from his employment. I appreciated that. And then I appreciate that he is still pursuing education himself.
Yeah, I saw a lot of balance in this candidate, just the cross-cultural skills that he has with ELL, certainly working at higher ed, but then working in the high school and really working with students to get them across that bridge into higher ed. I do think that we tend to emphasize a lot of, they may not be ready for college. I like the fact that he said, "No, no, no, but they need to head that way," and not being afraid to say that. So I really saw probably a well-balanced candidate in him. He talked about hope, but didn't leave it at that pie in the sky. It really was walking with folks, the cultural competency that it takes to do that in a diverse district like ours. So I saw that. I did like his emphasis from the pre-K through childcare, safe place. So I really appreciated that. Certainly, his skills in finance and academic is certainly gonna bring very much insight into into the board. And again, the emphasis that we need to have on ELL in our district as a whole, too, is very lacking. And so, for him to have that lens coming in is gonna be very helpful. He talked about customer service, walking people through, being heard, which is often a large criticism from our constituents. And so, having that voice, again, through him, is gonna be an interesting gift mix to this board.
I guess for myself, some things that stood out, I think repeatedly talked about a passion for increasing equitable access in education. I think, you know, that lens, you know, is valuable. I think, you know, as a board, we've been really intentional to adapt a deeper perspective in that regard. So, it was definitely pleasant to hear Mrs. Stephens not just mention that, but also give evidence of that with his own personal experience and professional experiences. I think also, again, understanding the connection between sort of hope, development, and success, and being a practitioner in that work and working with our students definitely brings some value to, you know, as we make decisions, you know, for our scholars throughout the district. So, I thought that was another, I guess, valuable asset that I grabbed, grasped from Mrs. Stephens' comments and presentation. So, I guess at this point, I'm gonna ask a question. I'm not gonna ask for any names, but I am curious with those of us on the board, if you have in your own mind at this point, without saying names, if you have a clear-cut choice if the decision was only yours. I'm not gonna ask you to make that decision or to offer the name, but I'm just really curious to determine how best we proceed in this difficult decision. So, again, no names, Reverend Mathias, but if the decision was yours, would you have a clear-cut selection?
I do. I am a little disappointed that we didn't have more candidates.
Understandable.
We should have had at least five.
Understandable.
Really. But we have three before us, but there is a clear choice, in my view.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Wow. I guess you're all the better decision-makers than I am. Well, would anyone want to make a motion for a particular candidate, then?
Though I already kind of played my hand, so anyway. But I would make a motion to appoint Ms. Shonda Vaughn to the vacant seat.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion about that motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to perhaps offer maybe another process in which we did like what we did with the numbering, you know, where we said how many votes for that, rather than taking a motion on each person.
Well, it wasn't mine to take a motion on each person, and at this point, we would only move forward with that if Ms. Williams was willing to retract her motion. And at this point, if we took the motion, if, with the motion on the table, if we took the vote and the vote was successful by at least five of us, although there are only six here, since we do have a board of nine, we do need to have five to support that. And if we did have the five votes based on Ms. Williams' motion, then that candidate would be who we were selecting for appointment. So, if we, if the board would like to consider a tallying process, then Ms. Williams would have to retract her motion.
Understand it. I just offered at this point.
Sure, absolutely. Which, you know, not to put any pressure on you, but Ms. Williams is not retracting her motion. So, Ms. Lewis, if you would take the vote. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Williams to select Ms. Shonda Vaughn for appointment. It's been seconded by Ms. Shaqy, and we will take the vote.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Lewis, no. Reverend Mathias?
No.
And President Ross?
Yes. So, that motion does not pass. I don't think, at this juncture, that does not mean any candidate is off the table for consideration. It is simply at this point that that particular motion did not pass. So, that opens it up for additional conversation. Would anyone want to do any extra advocacy or additional advocacy for any other candidate?
Well, since we have the awkwardness, I think somewhat awkwardness of this process, I'm gonna just go ahead and follow through and suggest by motion that we appoint Mr. Eaton.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That we appoint Mr. Eaton.
So, Dr. Flores has a motion to appoint Mr. Eaton. Is there a second for that?
Second.
There is a second. Any conversation? We'll take the vote.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
No.
And President Ross?
No.
Okay, we have four. We need five?
Yes. Well, this is quite the predicament. Well, nonetheless, we have what we have, and we will work through this, and we obviously will leave here with someone appointed. And at this point, it could still be Mr. Eaton, Ms. Vaughn, or Mr. Stephens. Well...
I think we ought to take a, listen to what Jose was saying over there.
He is a smart guy, isn't he?
Yeah, he is. That's right.
He's a smart guy. All right. Dr. Flores, would you like to recap your thoughts on getting us to consensus?
Yeah, I think we're already in the process. We're already just making another motion. If you'd like me to make it, I'll make it.
What if no one comes out?
Well, let's see. We've already created the process. Let's go. Let's go down this road.
And actually, I think we have our attorney here that may have to provide us some guidance if we cannot...
At this point, I don't think we... Do you have something to offer?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Stephens.
All right. We have a motion on the floor from Dr. Flores to appoint Mrs. Stephens.
Second.
We have a second from Reverend Mathias.
Ms. Shaqy?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Lewis, no. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. So, I do think, to your point, I did say yes. I think, to your point, Dr. Flores, you know, we could certainly, we can do a couple of things. We could definitely go the route of a tally and just all of us rank, rank folks in one, two, three, see how far it's out mathematically. Or we could get into more deliberative conversation about the strengths and/or concerns about each candidate. I am willing to go down either road based on the will of the board.
If I may offer, based on what we just voted up or down, there seems to be a consensus for, more consensus than not, for two candidates. Can we discuss those two candidates and see if we can bring this vote one way or another on those two, as two received at least a even vote, where there was one candidate that did not even receive an even vote? So, we clearly have two that are rising to the top. If we can maybe sway the board one way or another on those two, that may be helpful.
Don't we have two that have sort of risen to the top?
That is what she's, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And so, what, do you think we should do with those? I didn't understand.
I'm saying, let's deliberate on those and see if somebody can be swayed to support one person, one of those two over them.
Well, I'll start again. I appreciate Mr. Eaton. I really appreciate what he can bring, his skill set. As I voted yes for him, I think he has some skills that our district could benefit from. But for me, always, when somebody comes to this board and they talk about our scholars first, that is always gonna rise to the top for me, because when I come here to do this work, that's front of mind, and that somebody that can interview for us, make it clear that that's front of mind for them as well. To even say it that particular got my attention. But not to mention those things, I appreciate the way she had a real understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how, though many times we have this discussion around diversity, we don't also have that added discussion about the equity outcomes and the inclusion. And she really broke that down for us. I appreciate that she talked about academic achievement from interesting and from interest and excitement, and to bring that to the learning process. And I think as we look at new innovative ways and how we can change and grow for this particular group of youth that are before us, I think to bring interest and excitement to a classroom is so very important. She talked about safety, both physical and emotional, and we are, I think that just really does speak volumes about what we know our young people need. So, as well as her background and, but the biggest thing, again, for me was that she spoke about our scholars and to know that she's already doing this work on her own. She's not doing it for work. She's not doing, she does it because it's a pleasure. And so, I personally respect that. And so, those are my thoughts.
Any other thoughts anyone like to offer on Ms. Vaughn or Mr. Eaton?
Well, I think Mr. Eaton's background and work with the city also includes a lot of work with young people. He's on the, he served as a member of the Youth Council, but he's very involved with the city and the work that the city does with students. He's concerned about the arts. He has real-world experience about taking charge of something and making it grow, because over six years in the summit that he created, it went from 500 participants to over 2,000. So, he has real-world experience in doing those kinds of things. He was familiar with our strategic plan. He recognizes that the important thing we have to do is make sure that our, all of our kids are getting a good education, but he knew that those three schools he mentioned were schools that we especially have to work with, and he asked, what are we going to do about it? And I think that's a very important question that we ask ourselves all the time. And the achievement gap, he mentioned the achievement gap, and those, and students who are at risk, not just the schools, but the students who are at risk. So, I just feel strongly about him.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
I, too, want to echo all those things that you said, Ms. Lewis. You know, and not to sound clichish, but I think when a person is research-based and data-driven, they have some assets. And that's what I kept hearing, hearing from him, and I kept thinking, systems thinking, you know? He's looking at systems, and he's bringing a skill set that we really, you know, have to look at and say, what do we need, you know, in terms of our role as board members? You know, we need people with a skill set that, and with a degree of experiences of reaching out to greater communities, to making sure that there's voice from parents, voice from diverse set of students, and people who have had the training and are able to impart training if, in fact, they were called upon to do so, and who are, people who are innovative in terms of their thinking, in terms of strategies that can be employed to raise achievement. And he targeted issues that impact achievement, and he stated, you know, we have three schools that need attention, and that attention is going to have to have specific strategic endeavors to accomplish that. And I just think that his skill set is the kind of skill set that we need. And I would like to say that all of them, all of the candidates have impressed me tonight, and I could, I'd be happy with any one of them. You know, I think you all have the passion to serve these kids or these scholars, excuse me, our children, and, or adults in training. I love that, too. You know, but we have to choose, you know? I wish we would have interviewed the, or appointed the person with the highest vote get. It was so much easier, but we're not there. And what we do have before us, we need to decide. And so, if anyone has any give, I think, I think Mr. Eaton would be the best choice, and I continue to articulate that.
Wow. Well, I'll say, you know, I think it's obvious that some of us are conflicted. I'm definitely personally conflicted. You know, I personally just really see deep strengths in all candidates. And at this point, since we are talking about Mr. Eaton and Ms. Vaughn, I see some similarities, but I also see, at least in my mind, where Ms. Vaughn's sort of, you know, a talk-to-talk, walk-to-walk life. You know, I think if we could, you know, if we had some, not only is she the mayor of GRPS and whatnot, but I think probably, you know, pound for pound, I don't know if anyone really works harder, particularly in their free time, than Ms. Shonda Vaughn. And that frankly means a whole lot, you know? Then at the same time, I obviously listen to my colleagues and listen to Mr. Eaton myself. I do think there is definitely the sort of intelligence and system thinking that we know could be a benefit to the district, benefit to the work before us, you know? And I don't know, I'm probably saying a whole lot, not saying anything, but it is definitely a challenge. I think there's some definitely great strengths in either, and I would be happy with either, for sure. And right now, I'm probably just more thinking aloud, so thank you for indulging me on that. So, I don't know. I guess while I continue to marinate, any other comments, Reverend Mathias or Ms. Shaqy, on either?
I like you feel very comfortable with either.
Okay. Well...
May I move to support?
You may certainly make a motion if you choose.
I will move that we support Mr. Eaton for the position in the school board.
Do we have a second?
Second. Support.
Okay. Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Aye. That's not a answer, though, right?
No, it's not. That's not one of the choices. It's yea or nay here, John.
Oy, okay. Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
Most precarious.
All righty. Well, welcome, Mr. Eaton. And thank you very much to the folks who endured what was somewhat of an awkward process. But again, like many things, a lot of challenges, working rarely is it smooth. But thank you for indulging us and being here for your support, and I hope you stay engaged with things as we move forward. Mr. Eaton, the Board Assistant, Ms. Anderson will follow with you on sort of next steps to finalize the official aspects of your paperwork. And just so you know, our first meeting next year will be Monday, January 9th, but there will be also some learning opportunities prior to that that Ms. Anderson will chat with you about additionally. And I guess with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.